I'm Adam Bernie, Land Use Director, and you are here joining us at the Planning Board Meeting of November 9th, 2020, the year that will never end. I'm going to do a roll call to confirm that everyone is here. Matthew Allison.
Here.
Matthew Brenner.
Here.
Paula, hopefully you're done chewing.
I'm here.
All right. Tanner Cole will not be present, and it does not look like Eric Torgerson is here. So, in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, and this meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance of the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread, and all town facilities are currently open on a limited basis. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which can be found, which you can find posted on the town website in the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by Zoom Video Conference, as advertised on the town's website. And the public may join using a smartphone, tablet, or computer. Go to zoom.us and enter the meeting number, or call 888-475-4499. The meeting ID for this meeting is 894-151-54106. One more time, meeting ID 894-151-54106. With that, I will remind you that this meeting is being recorded, is being broadcast, and is being conducted via video conference. Please do not share your screen. Please ensure that your conduct and your background is family-friendly and appropriate and does not contain things you would not want others to see or be recorded because they will. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Adam has called us to order. Well, call us to order. There is three members, our director and PAC. So, is there any public comment?
I have a public comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Please.
This is a friendly reminder that coming on Tuesday, November 17th, is town meeting at the Lunenburg Middle High School. Please bring your friends, bring your spouse, bring your children, just come out. The more people we get, the sooner we can conduct our business and everyone can go home. So, please, 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 come to town meeting.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Specifically and especially for the registered voters of Lunenburg, we have special designated seating for non-residents.
That is correct.
Very good. So, any further public comment? Seeing none. We'll move right into our first appointment. 496 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg Water District.
That is correct.
Request for de minimis change.
So, the Water District apologizes they're not able to be here tonight. They had some scheduling conflicts, but it's a relatively simple change. The Planning Board at the hearing where they approved the Water District Headquarters at, on Mass Ave, approved the sign location, but wanted more information on what the sign would look like. And at that time, the superintendent was unaware what he wanted to do with the sign. They were still working on some things. They wanted to see what the budget for the building and the facility looked like. And so, the condition was that they would return to this board and ask for a modification to close the loop on the sign. So, they've got a sign designed. It's been submitted in your packet, and where they're not changing the location, I suggested they go with the de minimis change because, in reality, it's not altering the site plan in any way. It's just a rendering of the sign.
Okay. So, it is, what, six by four? So, 24 square feet?
That's correct.
And that's within our guidelines for the sign by law?
You know, the sign by law is like a physics equation to me. And I know that they have spoken with the building commissioner about it. And I believe that because they are public, it does fit within the sign allowable sizes.
I thought the allowable sizes were by zoning, not municipality or youth.
They are, but I think that there's a... Every time I look at this, it's different. Because it has Class A, and it doesn't line up with zoning districts.
Can you pull it up on the screen, Adam, what you're looking at?
Yeah. So, it has these Class A, and it has zoning districts, which is on the building.
Okay. What zone is the Water District building in?
They are, I think they're limited business, because this is them here.
Okay. So, limited business and residential, correct?
Well, it's limited business slash residential is the name of the district.
Okay.
Maximum height of sign is eight feet. Maximum area of building sign is nine. Location and number signs.
Maximum area is nine square feet?
No, that's for building signs.
Okay.
Maximum area of building sign is nine square feet.
Okay. Street, a minimum distance from the street line of 50% of the required front yard.
One per street.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. So, that's just the location.
Yeah.
And then, it doesn't say anything about size.
Keep going. There's got to be an area that talks about sign, the size. One non-illuminated sign for each separate street line, not to exceed nine square feet, nor eight feet in height.
Non-illuminated. Other signs may be limited. Per or unapproved site plan.
But not to exceed nine square feet.
Yep. Further limited as follows, so the sign should be subject to... And I mean, really, the approval of the sign is locationally, as far as the site plan goes. But...
So, it's pretty clear. It's nine square feet.
It does say nine, yeah. And so, that's a, that's an issue for the building inspector.
So, yeah. And also, I want to touch upon the, what is it? Has to be 50% the required frontage setback?
Yeah. So, it has to be 20 feet from the street line.
20 feet?
Because it's a 40-foot setback.
The frontage.
Didn't it say frontage, not setback?
Yeah.
I thought it said 50% of the required setback from the frontage.
Well, let's go back.
All signs should be located on the building or at a minimum distance from the street line of 50% of the required front yard.
So, the front yard is 100, right?
So, 50 feet.
The front yard is not 100.
Okay.
The required front yard would be 40 in all districts.
Oh, front yard setback. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Got it. Not the required frontage, the required front yard. It's, it's an awkward wording.
So, a minimum of 20 feet?
Correct.
And it looks like it might be that because it looks closer than the width of the road?
Yeah. And we did, I mean, that was, that was, this location hasn't changed since the approval.
Well, the approval was deficient, as we've already found out. So, I just want to make sure that we don't give any further passes.
I can scale that on the full-size plans tomorrow.
Okay. So, the nine square feet, is that something they can go to zoning board and?
Yeah. It's a, that would be a special permit dimensional.
So, we're not going to give that to them because that's not our purview? Is that correct?
Correct. You can't give that to them.
So, that is not, okay. So, they'll have to come back again for another de minimis change? Once they get the approval?
Yeah. I was going to say, if you, if you want them to get the, if you want to wait till they have the zoning board, then you would just continue this until they have that, and you guys can approve it when they, they have that, that buttoned up.
Does anybody else have something to say about this?
I don't have anything to say about this circumstance, but we certainly need to make sure that Bright Farms and any other business is aware of these requirements.
We have spoken with Bright Farms about their sign size, and he's aware of the limitations based on, on where he would put the sign and what he permitted.
Okay.
Okay. So, can we have, we need a motion to continue this?
No.
We can continue to update certain.
But it's, it's not an advertised hearing. It's a de minimis change. So, it's a, it's a request. It just needs to be on a public meeting.
So, we, we just say no and come back?
Yeah. I'll just tell them that they need that relief and that the board will, will entertain it after that.
Excellent.
Right.
Any further discussion on that topic? Okay. Hearing none. I've been notified that Bright Farms has requested a continuance for the public hearing, which is a continuation from 10/26. So, I don't think we need to do any formalities except for announce that?
No, you need to motion to continue it.
We do? Okay.
Because they've requested the continuance, so you need to accept it and approve it.
I would make a motion to continue Bright Farms to November 26?
November 23rd.
Sorry, November 23rd, at 6:35.
I would second.
Excellent. Okay. That is great. All in favor, it's going to have to be a roll call. Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Super. Continued. Next on our agenda is 361 Massachusetts Ave. Bright Farms, review draft decision and possible vote to approve site plan approval and stormwater permit.
So, we just continued? So, I think we can, we can continue. Yeah.
Well, we could do this.
Unless anyone has comments on the decision that you'd like to...
Matt, do you have comments on the draft decision?
Honestly, I haven't even had the opportunity to read it.
Yeah. So, I think we should just continue it.
That's fine. I wanted to give you the opportunity to make it easier the next time around.
Excellent. I appreciate that. I can possibly, should we follow up with that with you, Adam? If we do have comments?
Yeah. If you have comments that come up from your reading of it, please just shoot me an email, give a call, stop by, whatever.
Okay. Very good. So, we are... Do we need to officiate moving this to the next meeting?
No, because it's all part and parcel of the, the public hearing.
Okay. Now, this question's come up before, and I don't remember the specific answer, but is the stormwater permit a special permit, as it's written?
Yes and no.
So, then we technically?
It's not a 40A special permit.
Okay.
It reads special permit. But you, if, if you have a special permit per the 40A legislation, it needs to be in zoning, which is where this started, which is why it still reads a special permit.
Okay.
Part of why the proposed amendments that we've been working on remove the special and just call it a permit. They call it stormwater permit.
But until that's effectuated, do we need to have four members?
You do not.
Okay. Because it's not a 40A?
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Matt, does that make sense to you? For special permits, we're required to have a supermajority to approve a special permit?
Okay. I need a definition on special permit.
Adam?
It's the, it's, it's a 40A special permit. So, special permits are a subjective permit that are for things that communities want to permit to happen in town, but don't want to allow by right.
Okay.
There are a special class of permit within 40A, which is the zoning laws in Mass General Law. They require a supermajority approval. Oftentimes, you will see special permits for uses. Those are often issued by the zoning board. And again, it's stuff like an auto garage, where the town is like, sure, we're okay with having auto garages, but we know that the impact wrench makes noise, and there's lights and smells, and we want to be sure that where we put them isn't affecting a neighbor or a residence or a school or something to that effect.
And then, there's more subjective things like marijuana?
Yeah. And I mean, even those are subjective because they're a special permit, and you can, as long as you have cause to deny them within the laws that you write that govern them, you can deny them.
That makes total sense to me then. Thank you.
Excellent. So, Adam has already mentioned that we've got a special town meeting coming up. We have a stormwater bylaw warrant article, and the view stormwater presentation is our next agenda item.
It is. So, there's nothing fancy about these because the town manager puts them all in the same design kit, so I just send her white slides because it's easier. Really, there's not a lot to it. It's a description of why we have the permit, what the genesis for it was, and why we want to work on it. What is NIFTies?
Can you go back up again, please? Okay.
Why, what is NIFTies? You know, I think that gives some, some basis for what the purpose of it is. What the timeline of the bylaw is, because I think it's important that we reference and tell people that this has been on the books for 13 years, and it has had some minor changes over the years. But it's not a new bylaw. This isn't something we're thrusting upon people. A very quick overview of what the changes are. I don't think it does anybody any good to type them all out and show them every nut and bolt. And I mean, really, all of this is language directly from the permit. So, it's not like the Planning Board has said, oh, we need to craft this very specific language. Language was given to us.
I want to ask you a question about that, because I know one of the, the big thresholds is that it goes from 80% removal of total suspended solids to 90. When does the state requirement change to 90?
Your guess is as good as mine.
So, that's a pretty significant change, and will that affect only new construction moving forward or existing businesses?
It will only, and the states will, will as well, only affect new business, new, new construction going forward.
Okay.
Because this, this is a design review process. And even if, say, the town didn't adopt this bylaw, if you're disturbing an acre of land, you still need a construction general permit from EPA, and they're going to require you to remove 90% of TSS.
So, when we were reviewing some of the developments on electric gab, I thought that this came up, and the question of whether or not you needed to comply with 80 or 90% came up, and the fact that 90% would be going into effect would be retroactive. So, that's incorrect?
I, my understanding is that it is not retroactive, because if, if we were to do that, then the 80% that's currently in place now would be retroactively applied to things that were built in the 70s.
Well, to be clear, the NIFTies permit is retroactive. I mean, the NIFTies permit does require existing outfalls and structures to be upgraded if they're determined to be an issue.
It's not, it's not retroactive to private businesses. It's retroactive to the town's municipal separate storm sewer system, which is the only thing that the town is responsible for. And it's only retroactive in that you need to be sure that as you're doing outfall inspections, if they're damaged or not functioning, they need to be replaced or repaired. There is a retrofit requirement within the current NIFTies permit that the town, in I believe it's year five, needs to start identifying, and by year 10, needs to have executed, I think it's a minimum of one, and it might be a total of five retrofits on existing BMPs to bring them further into compliance, and those are on town facilities. So, we're not going to go to Walmart and knock on their door and say, hey, you designed this and built this in 1995. This doesn't have this, that, or the other thing. You need to change it.
All right. But what about the testing requirement? Is that still part of the new regulations, and that's for the town to conduct testing?
Correct.
And that testing is for contamination, correct?
Well, yes and no. It is, it's for, yes, contamination. But it's...
Okay. So, my question is, is if we have our requirement, when it goes into effect, will be 90% removal of TSS, if we have existing private businesses that are discharging to our stormwater infrastructure that are discharging substantially more than the, they're discharging 80%, where does that put the town?
It, we're not, we're not looking at TSS in the, the testing. The testing is for surfactants, phosphorus, nitrogen, ammonia, that kind of stuff. And, and we have, I think to date, we've done 75% of our outfalls, and the ones that remain are the ones that they couldn't find or weren't mapped properly. And I think out of the, I think almost 300 outfalls that we have, they've done 235 or 240, and I think they have six that they have to go back and retest.
Who's in the testing?
CEI. They're our contractors.
Okay.
They, the, the testing is often not about runoff from systems. It's often for, it's, it's not often it is. It's to detect illicit connections.
Okay.
Washing machines, floor drains, that kind of stuff that would be pumping illicit material into the system that we would then become responsible for.
Okay. So, this regulation, once we adopt it, will make our restrictions more stringent than the state requirements?
Correct.
Okay. Other than the TSS, is there anything substantial in our regulations beyond the TSS that are, that will?
The phosphorus loading is also increased.
Okay. From what to what?
I don't have the, the bylaw right in front of me. If you give me a minute, I think it's from, I think it's from 40 to 60, 40% to 60%.
Okay.
And again, this is, this is mirroring what they would be required to have with the, with the Phase 2, or the, I'm sorry, the construction general permit.
You know, the only thing that I'm concerned about is we say that we're mirroring the requirements of the state, and that we're doing this because we, we need to come in compliance with the state. And I just want to be clear, these regulations are actually more stringent than the current state regulations.
No, I didn't, I, I didn't say the state. We're, we're mirroring the permit, the permit issued by the federal government that was signed off on.
Sorry, the federal government. Right.
And the reason I can't tell you when the state will, will have their regulations ready is because they don't know. Their, their intent is to go out to comment in the spring. And so, that comment period could bring back nothing.
Additional changes.
It could bring back nothing. It could bring back significant changes. So, it's, it's impossible for me to give a realistic estimate of when they would be ready, because I don't think they have a realistic estimate.
So, I guess I'm questioning, I'm completely in agreement with the definitions, and clearly in agreement with changing all the permit granting authority references, the outlining the filing process and the submission requirements, all good with all of that. My concern is the two significant design standards that we're putting forth that are more stringent than the current requirements in the state of Massachusetts, and what kind of pushback we're going to get on that.
And I think that the thing that, that I intend to stress, and I think is important that we do stress, is that this doesn't affect the average homeowner. If you go to put a garden in, in the spring, you're not subject to this. If you build a shed or a pool, you're not subject to this. I don't think there's anyone in Lunenburg who's building a 43,560 square foot pool. This is, this is affecting people who are building large commercial projects and multiple residential homes at the same time.
No, I understand that.
And I know you understand that, but I think it's important to stress that because, you know, I, I know people got wound up in the earth removal on, oh, well, if I do this and I do that, I'm going to end up with 1,500 cubic yards. I can't see a conceivable connection where an average homeowner is going to come and say, yeah, you know, on a regular basis, I disturb an acre of land. And there is agricultural exemptions. Yeah. It was 40, and it is now 60.
Looking at the slides, I wonder if we would be well-served by adding a slide or restructuring a slide to really, to clearly communicate these key points, separate from some of the more technical information here? Because I think for most people, they're not going to care about the precise laws and NPDES Phase 2 and everything else. They're going to want to know what, how is this impacting me? How is this? And some will care about how is this impacting business in town? So, I think having a, and I apologize, I didn't really have a chance to read it over. I know, Adam, you emailed me earlier, but today was the first day I had a chance to sit down with the documentation.
That's all right.
That, I think there is an advantage in kind of having a what and why slide, like a really, I don't want to say dumbed down, because I don't mean dumbed down, but I mean straightforward, easy to consume. That is, you know, what are the changes we're making? Here they are. Why are we making these changes? Why are we making these changes now? Give the precise reason. Who will this impact? Who will, you know? And then, we, and we can kind of lay that out in very plain language, because that takes all that salient point, puts it in one place. It also lets you focus your, kind of your best words and best speaking to that point, too.
Sure.
So, that's my suggestion, but I'm open to other thoughts on this, because I, I've done a lot of presenting. I have not done a lot of presenting at town meeting.
I agree with you, Matt, Matthew. I, I think we... I agree with you, Matt, Matthew. I, I think we need to, I think we need to make it simpler. Because as Matthew said, people aren't going to know what all of this means.
And I, I think we would be well-served by, I mean, I think the best is to open with it.
Okay.
Um, I'm a, I'm a big fan in communication of answer first. Of, this is, you know, just opening with, this is what, this is what we're doing. And then you can get into why and everything else, but we open with, th- these are the changes. These are the reasons for the changes. And then you filter down to the technical, because what happens is they have their initial attention. And people are going to, and if they like what they hear, they're going to say, okay, great, they're going to stop paying attention, it doesn't matter.
Sure.
If they need more detail, they'll then get our plain speak language. They'll go, okay, great. And now Adam's getting into technical stuff that people need, and who cares? And then the people who really need the technical will keep following along for that.
So you want to kick this to the first slide and, and distill it down a little bit?
I would kick it to the first slide, distill it down a little. Um, I, I think we have, I, I, I think like Mrs. Bertram said, we do have to call out some of the changes we're making that are, that, um, uh, that are different from the state requirement, but I think we also need to give the why. Um, I think the why is a powerful tool, even more so than the what. Is the, this bylaws being put forward because we need to come into compliance with regulations from blah. And, and I, I don't know, uh, I admit that this is where I have trouble following what, what different rules we are coming into regulation here, uh, coming into, you know, compliance with.
So I, you don't think the why should be first? You think the what should be first?
Oh, no, I, I think why is first. I could have been.
I wouldn't say, why do we have the bylaw? Why are we changing the bylaw?
Yes. Yes. Give them the, again, because people are going to hear, oh, we need to do this to come into compliance, and it's just a requirement. Okay.
And then they're going to be done.
Yeah.
So.
Then they're going to go to their Sudoku and tune back in when it's time to hold up your cards.
Good point.
And this is super confusing, because this is the opposite of the way we're, we were taught to communicate growing up and in school and everything, like for writing a paper, right? It's one eighty off.
Welcome to town government.
So, uh, uh, so why are we changing the bylaw? Uh, are we keeping some of the same language, or do you want me to rewrite the slide?
Let's see.
Because honestly, the, to evaluate and codify is also why we're changing it, but it's also why we have it.
But, but I think that that's. Okay.
Yep.
So I think we say we currently have a bylaw in accordance with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination. And then the next section on the same slide, why are we changing it? To come into compliance with changing regulations. I mean, I think we, I don't think we need to evaluate and codify, and I, I don't know that we need all that. What do you think, Matthew?
Uh, well, I, I think, do we have, is, are we changing, is a perfect revision. I'm not, uh, again, I'm not too sure who's going to be concerned about this and why. Um, I think this is going to have the glazing effect. I don't, um, I, I don't.
My goal.
But that shouldn't be your goal, because.
I, I, I joke, it's not, I.
No, I, I think the topic itself is going to have the glazing effect.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the, the approach, oh, sorry, Matthew, I talked over you.
That's, that's fine. Good.
Oh, uh, the approach I like to use is if I'm going to explain it to my seven-year-old. Um, and that's, again, we get the, it's not dumbing it down for people, it's, you're, this is a town meeting, we're going to be at the end, people don't have that mental energy. So, a- and I guess my, my legit question is, if you were going to explain it to my seven-year-old, I mean, he's not dumb, but he doesn't have world experience. Why do we have the bylaw? Like, wh- wh- the bylaw exists to uh, protect our water supply from X, Y, and Z, maybe? And the same as, why are we cha- uh, a- and, and it's a state requirement that we have the bylaw. Why are we changing the, why are we changing the bylaw? The state requirements are changing, so we're coming into, so we are coming, we're doing this to come into compliance.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. And just leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, like, really, very simple language, because that's, that's what people actually care about. Now, it may be wise to say, we're doing it, we are changing the bylaw. Well, the why are we changing is to come into compliance, the what are we changing, we have to call out. We are doing these things because we already have to change the bylaw. We're doing these other things to protect our waterways for X, Y, and Z reason.
Mm-hmm.
And we can make it clear that we're, we have to make the change, which is why we're doing it, but since we're changing, two birds with one stone, let's do this other thing that's also really important for the continued well-being of our community.
Right.
And I, I love that you, the first thing you get into is recreational water use.
Mm-hmm.
Like, that's your first point in that area, because that's, people aren't going to think about safety, but when you say, we're keeping our ponds, you know, our ponds able to be used.
Yeah, I mean, anybody who lives on either lakes knows that their, the algal blooms are a problem.
Yeah. Oh, other small note on the, what is NPDES phase two?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I just caught, uh, third bullet, third sub-bullet needs a capital P.
Yes, it does.
And maybe, it may be a space removal, too.
Yep.
Well, there's also this thing, uh, the, the warrant itself is twenty-five, twenty-seven pages, and this.
Twenty of it is ours.
This one article, being the last article, starts on page ten and ends on page twenty-four. So we've got fourteen pages in the warrant, and we've got ten words describing it, that's going to bring question, I think.
Matthew, I apologize, you cut out there, I, I missed your last sentence.
Okay, I, I think, I think just the fact that we've, we're, we've got a fourteen pages in the warrant, and we're, we're trying to do it with three slides and very small words, it might, it might raise eyebrows, I, just a thought.
I don't know, I see, I, I see value, and so I, I should be more clear in my communication and what I'm saying here, then. I see a lot of value in what Adam's put together for slides, and so, Adam, I, I don't want to, I realize, yeah. Um, I think these are very good slides, I think they get into important things. I think we want to open with something more basic and then get into details.
No, that, that makes perfect sense.
Uh, and, and, uh, Matthew, the, the reason being that that way, again, we, the people who hear and go, oh, okay, great, that's, this is a law that deals with X. That we, it's something we have to do, it makes sense, super. Um, and then we still get it, we can still get into more of the nitty-gritty for those who need or want that level of detail. I'm not trying to imply we only have simple slides.
Oh, no, 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 not at all. I, I like your suggestion, I just, I want to, I just wanted to caution us against being too simplistic.
I, I also think, though, if we did a fifteen-slide presentation and, and broke down each change, uh, by slide three, we would lose everyone, and they would just be like, can we just move this?
Somebody just move the question, move the presentation.
Exactly.
All right. Um, all right, so I like those comments, um, start out with the why, and, um, and answer the questions that may come up, hopefully preemptively. Um, did we get through all your slides?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the, the joke with the town manager is you only get two.
How is that funny?
Because it's, i- i- she's never, she's never said no to slides.
Okay.
But the idea is try not to show up with thirty slides. As we've all sat through it, different town meetings for different things that probably could have been done in, instead of twenty slides, could have been done in ten.
Ele- eleven and a half is my, is the longest one I remember.
Eleven and a half hours or slides?
Hours.
All right, so where are we at?
Uh, I'm going to work on a, a new opening slide and filter down out some of the other stuff.
All right, so we'll look at this tomorrow, we did post for earlier tomorrow?
It's a week from tomorrow.
I'm sorry, a week from tomorrow. So you'll send it out?
Well, I'll send it out, I have to have it to the town manager by Thursday.
Okay.
So that's, that's the, that's the downfall here, is that whatever we direct Adam to do, we won't get another review at it until it's.
Or I can do it tomorrow and send it out, and you have the opportunity to individually make comment to me.
All right, so can you just run through, so the first slide is going to be the, is going to be that we have an existing bylaw, and why are we changing it?
Yep.
Right? The next slide is going to be.
Uh, I would say probably the bylaw, I mean, we can probably do away with the timeline.
Yeah, I don't think we need that.
Uh, then I would say the next slide is, um.
What are we changing, right? I thought that's what Mr. Brenner suggested.
Why are we changing it? What are we changing? And then what is NIPD's?
Yeah. Are you good with that, Mr. Brenner? Is that what you would recommend?
That, that is my recommendation, yes. Yeah, I'm good with that.
And I'm good with that as well.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's our input, Adam.
All right, thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Um, so we're on the minutes approval. We've got two, three sets, two, three, three sets.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-six, twenty-twenty.
I would second.
All right, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, roll call, Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, thank you. Two public hearings.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-six, twenty-twenty for Bright Farms, three sixty-one Mass Avenue.
I would second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you.
Okay, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-six, twenty-twenty for the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land, section three twenty-five dash three point two.
I would second.
Excellent, any further discussion? All in favor, Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, thank you much. That brings us up to, oh, oh, stop sharing, that's all, oh, there we go, started sharing. Economic Development Committee, view and vote on revised charge.
So as we talked about the last time, uh, we were taking out the requirement that the Agriculture Commission forward a business owner, uh, and that we were, uh, at their request, revoking the Conservation Commission's recommendation and switching it to a member at large. So it would be one agricultural, one recommendation from the Agricultural Commission, easy for me to say, uh, that shall be appointed for three years, uh, one recommendation from the open space for three years, three members at large, two shall be for two years, one shall be for one year.
Okay, and did we have a consensus about not having a requirement for the third, for the at-large positions?
I, we definitely talked about it, and I don't know if we had a consensus.
Uh, what, we didn't have any requirements for the at-large position at this time.
Yeah, just, yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't say.
We had talked about potentially trying to have one be a business owner, but we felt that that would limit, so they decide you, when the charge was developed, you decided to not do that, and instead put a Lunenburg business owner in the ex officio, thus giving it the ability to be someone who may not live here. Uh, and I'll, again, remind you that the two people you've already appointed are both business owners in the town.
Right. Super, so short of the bullets being in the right places, I think.
Uh, yeah, there's, just, that'll get sorted out in the format.
Sure. Does any, good, go ahead.
I'm fine with the changes if everyone else is.
I'm completely fine with the changes.
Uh, I am, and one additional question, Adam, have, have we heard anything about the open spaces potential appoint, uh, recommendation?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to follow up with Lynn Man, Man again tomorrow.
Okay. Very good, um, uh, I saw the person walk by my house today, and I, I didn't have the opportunity to yell out, um, but I certainly can reach out.
Oh, if you could, that would be great, and forward of my contact information, that would be great.
Okay.
And it sounds like ag comm is pretty close, Matthew?
Uh, as soon as we take the, uh, business owner out, I'm pretty sure we'll have, uh, at least one person has already voiced interest, um, with two, maybe three, I'm not sure. But that will be upcoming, um, and also while we're on this topic and before we make the motion, uh, it's been a year now, and I have yet to hear this opening, these openings announced by the town manager at the select board meetings, ever. Could you please remind her that we have chart, have come up with this charge?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, I think we need a motion to, uh, accept these changes to the charge.
I would motion to accept the changes to the charge for the Lunenburg Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Excellent, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, roll call, Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, excellence. We are well on our way to getting that committee going. All right, now we are at the point of committee reports. Was there some, anybody had anything to say?
I, I actually have a question.
Okay.
Um, at one point in time, Mr. Bernie, I was on the Green Communities Task Force, and then, um, Mr. Bittner took over. I am getting emails from the Green Communities Task Force, but as far as I know, I am no longer the rep, but they are meeting again. So we didn't, when we, when we talked about charges for various committee members, we didn't talk about Green Communities.
So, Mr. Bittner was a member of the Green Communities Task Force, separate from his charge on the planning board.
Okay.
Had been the planning board's liaison and found that they were having trouble, uh, seeding the group due to lack of forum and lack of membership, so he said, hey, why don't you put me on that? And the selectman said, sure. Um, I, you know.
I'm getting, I'm getting the emails, and, because there is supposed to be a planning board rep on the Green Communities, and I don't think when we did our committee charges, we talked about the Green Communities Task Force.
I don't, I, I was unaware that there was a planning board rep. Um, I don't.
Matthew, um, Mr. Allison, do you know?
I, I honestly, I'm not familiar with that charge, so I do not know.
I, I would have to look at the charge and find out, but I, my understanding is it had always been a liaison and not a member of the committee.
Okay, can we look into that? Because as I said, I am getting the, um, the emails, and as far as I know, I'm not on there, um. So as of right now, maybe it is a liaison, because I just pulled it up on the website, and the members are listed as David Blatt, Elizabeth Murphy, and Neil Sullivan. Um, so I'm not sure if they're just looking for a.
Are they looking for you to do something, or are they just including you in the email?
Know when the meetings are, and I haven't been able to attend, but if we're supposed to be attending, I want to make sure we do. So maybe we could just reach out to Mr. Blatt?
Yeah, let me look at the charge, and I'll, I'll give, uh, Mr. Blatt a call.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, also, that brings up a question in my mind, is if it is just a liaison position, would that be like an ex officio, a non-voting member?
No. I- i- if, if the liaison had been, just the board decided they felt that that was a group they wanted to have a liaison with. Was my recollection. Was my recollection.
So I guess, I guess my question stands is the liaison from planning board would be a voting member of that group?
I don't believe so. I don't think it had anything to do with the charge that group was given. I think the planning board said, hey, excuse me, you guys are working on these things. Maybe we should just stick our head in and see what you're doing and see if it matches up with anything we're working on.
Sure. Okay. Excellent.
Sorry about that. I didn't mean to derail you, Mr. Chair.
Not at all. No, no, I was just checking when our next ag meeting is. So Stormwater Task Force is rather defunct. We haven't met since February, so there's no report. The Agricultural Commission will be meeting on the 19th, two days after our town meeting. The TCP Building Design Committee, I was just at before this meeting. I had to leave early. They started at 5:30, so I got to enjoy that for almost an hour. Tonight's meeting, they were basically, they, they were with the architect and the engineer and going over their presentation. They seemed to have it pretty well. They started out with 13 slides. I think they got it down to 10 slides. So I mean, I'm, I'm not going to really comment on that since that was my first meeting with them. I hope to become participatory after time meeting with that group. And then that's the end of my committee reports. Open Space Ad hoc Committee.
We have a meeting on the 24th.
Okay. Capital Planning Committee.
I'm looking at when our next meeting is.
Is it tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow morning, tomorrow at 5:15.
And, and have you sworn, have you gotten sworn in?
Good point, Matthew. I will make a point to go to the town hall tomorrow.
Excellent. Excellent. Montez and Regional Planning Commission.
I went to the MRPC meeting last week. The two things that pertained to Lunenburg would be that for the Lunenburg Conservation Lands Trail Mapping, they've received and processed all the GPX data for 17 trail updates. And they're waiting on a response, the Senate Inquiry about the specifics of the map design. And so that's where they are in that process. Yep. And the Lunenburg, for the Lunenburg ADA Self-Evaluation, they completed the measuring and calculation for the ramp slopes for the public buildings as they were supposed to. And now they are, they are either will be or have started writing the draft report for local officials and the public. They did not give a timeline for when to expect that exactly.
Nice. Very good. That, that's it.
Yep.
So the Montez and Joint Transportation Committee.
Meets tomorrow.
Very good. Brings us up to directors items.
So 360 Flat Hill Road, Paula, you may have more information on this after tomorrow than I do, but the selectmen received the memo. They have put off taking action until they hear back from open space. Mr. Kibbe was at their meeting and did explain to them the situation and where he was and what he was doing. They seemed amenable to allowing that time to, to be worked out. At the meeting, the chair of the Board of Selectmen indicated that Town Council didn't feel that it was a complete filing, which was contested by the, I guess I'll call him the applicant, the applicant's attorney. So there's still a question as to where we are on the timeline, but it seems that open space is working pretty diligently on this. I'm glad you, a meeting tomorrow night, right, Mrs. Bertram?
Open space?
Yeah.
No, we moved it out.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's, it's after our next planning board meeting. It's on.
Yeah, it's the, it's the 24th. Yeah, it's the 24th.
It's my turn to be confused about which week it is.
Yeah, it's the 24th.
And it's not on the agenda, but today our new DBW director started the, started in town. His name is Rob Oliver. He comes from the city of Gardner. He was the assistant DPW director there. Some of you may recognize the name. He used to work at Ross Associates as an engineer. I don't believe he's a PE, but he has many years of engineering experience and I think it's the past two and a half or three years he's worked as the assistant director in Gardner. So you'll probably start seeing him around a bit more.
Excellent. No, Mr. Dwyer asked specifically, and, and he is not a professional engineer. He's not licensed. But I, I do remember him from his David Ross days. So if, do I need to state for the record that number 10 directors items I had to recuse myself from? I don't think I need to recuse myself.
No, because there was, there was no action taken. It was informational.
Very good. Just crossing my Ts and dotting my Is. So meeting schedule, November 17th is our town, is our special town meeting. So we have a scheduled meeting, 6:30?
We do.
That 6:30 is when.
Is when our meeting is scheduled, town meeting is at 7:00.
And when are we meeting?
We'll meet in the hall and if we need to duck into a collaborative room, we can do that.
Well, I think we're going to need a collaborative room if we're going to take a look at the slides, right?
Well, the slides will be sealed and done at that point.
Okay, all right.
So, so just, just, well, especially for Matt. Typically, we've had scheduled a meeting before the town meeting, just in case something came up that we needed to discuss with form. And if, if that does, if that need does arise, then I typically will be there at the front door, gathering our membership or letting people know as I see them. And it's not, it's, it's, I only remember one time that we've actually taken advantage of it. So just FYI.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we've got the annual time, the special time meeting on the 7th. And then we've got a workshop on the 23rd where we will be hearing Bright Farm continuation and hopefully closing out their order of conditions for the site plan in Stormwater.
One would hope.
And they probably hope so as well.
Yes, they do.
So we are at the public comment stage. And let's see, just for giggles, without the, nope, seeing no public, hearing no comment.
I'll make another plug for people to come to town meeting. Just the more we say it, maybe the more people will come.
All right. Yeah, so that's it. 1079 Mass Ave. Lot parcel, blah, 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 all 55 acres of it. That's partly municipal and partly school. And partly falling down crumbly, crumble. So are there any board comments or concerns? Hearing none.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
And is there any further discussion about adjourning at 7:31, Marjorie? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call. Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you for a very short and courteous meeting.